I know, how about you? A couple of weeks I got an email.
Yeah, it was in the end.
I had this email from Eric Diaz, P D has seen that kind of stuff. Now, there's a thing of the breakfast of Chris Boyd on Friday. Just to the night. Have you talked about?
I saw him sort of.
Oh, cool.
Years ago, kids were saying he was.
He's having a good time. So I can't go next week because I'm going to be in town for the week, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I just tried to figure out transition. My wife's going to Seattle for her sister's birthdays. My birthday is the. It's their thirtieth, though, so.
Yeah.
It's been different like 41.
Good. I'm telling you, nine more years.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Citrus Heights Planning Commission meeting of August 10th, 2022. It is 7:00 PM and I'm calling this meeting to order. I have asked Commissioner Magnavsky to lead us in the pledge. Do you please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And as the first item on the agenda is to call roll, Madam Secretary, would you please do so?
Commissioner Engel?
Here.
Commissioner Magnavsky?
Here.
Commissioner Nishimura?
Here.
Commissioner Turner Mike?
Here.
Commissioner Sheila is out this evening. Vice Chair Van Duker?
Here.
Chair Flowers?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, and may I have the next agenda item, please?
Consent calendar, approval of minutes for July 13th, 2022.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting from July 13th of 2022, please?
I move to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I will second.
Okay, any changes or addendums to the minutes at this point? Okay, all in favor? Do you need to take a roll call on that? Okay, by unanimous consent, passed. Next agenda item, please.
Public comment. Under Government Code 54954.3, members of the audience may address the commission on any agenda item within the jurisdiction of the commission or on any agenda item. Those wishing to speak on non-agenda items will be called upon at the beginning of the meeting. Those wishing to speak for or against an agenda item will be called upon after the presentation by the City Planning Division and the applicant for that agenda item.
Thank you. Are there any speaker or non- on the non-agenda items this evening? Okay, next agenda, please.
Public hearing. Calvary Maintenance Facility, Calvary Cemetery Maintenance Facility relocation. File number PLN 2204707101, Werner Avenue. The project applicant is requesting to amend the previously approved project for Calvin Cemetery by relocating the future maintenance facility area from the north side of the building, from the north side of the property to the south side of the property. The maintenance facility area will include the construction of a 6,000-plus-square-foot maintenance building and 1,500-square-foot garage with an attached open bin for storage. Project Planner Allison Bermudez.
Good evening, Commission. Allison Bermudez here with the Planning Division here with this item tonight. As mentioned, this is a relocation project for the maintenance building at Calvary Cemetery. The cemetery is located at 7101 Werner Avenue. And if you recall, back in 2019 and then in 2021, we reviewed this project. The first project in 2019 with a significantly sized project where they were building a new administration center and chapel. And you see that under construction if you travel along 80 or happen to go down Werner Avenue. It's a very beautiful, large building under construction that's really progressing. In 2021, they did a slight use permit amendment to allow them to do some embalming at the property. And that happened in 2021. Since that time, it's been a strange couple of years, so they've had to. They, construction costs and utility connections were getting quite expensive. And so part of the original project was to build this maintenance center that did exist on the site, but they were tearing it down for the new administration center. And they're moving it more north along 80. But due to all the connections and the construction costs, that became quite expensive. So they are requesting to relocate that maintenance center to the site we are tonight. So this is really to amend this previously approved project since this change to relocate the maintenance facility. This map here shows the administration center there on the south, which is, you've seen, under construction. And that's in the approximate area where the existing or the original maintenance facility was located. And they were moving it to that area along the north side. And you can see the distance was quite far from the main building. It became quite expensive due to all those connections. So they are requesting to move it to this new location. The two buildings proposed, one is a large maintenance building. It's going to have office, break room, lockers, all the employee necessities needed for the maintenance staff along with offices. And then there'll be a separate garage for the parking of the hearse, flower vans, and their vehicles, give them covered parking. And then there'll be a small parking lot for employees. The maintenance shop will also have the storage of the mowers, the weed trimmers, all the equipment used for the maintenance of the facility, the digging of the graves, and as well as the storage of the landscape materials for the graves and the maintenance and repair of any cemetery markers on the property. General operating hours for the maintenance staff is Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 3:30. That's their general working hours. This map here shows that maintenance area, the large building there, about 6,000 square feet. And then to the left of that is the garage with the storage bin for the landscape materials. There's also another storage material there to the north. The property, the buildings will be located, meeting the setback along the property line. So adjacent to this is Lakeview Village, so there is an existing wooden fence. What's landscaping that will remain in place. They will plant some additional screening trees along that property boundary to give future screening of the buildings. And then the buildings are meeting the required setback of 25 feet, so there'll be no structures any closer than 25 feet to that existing property line. As you can see by the orange arrows, the entrance into the buildings is from the, in this map, the east and the west. There's no vehicle access along between, in that 25-foot setback. Excuse me. It is a fire lane, but it will not have any travel by cars or employees. The large building, these are the office space, restrooms, locker room, and then the two end pieces are the storage areas for the equipment. Landscaping, as I mentioned, includes the planting of several new trees along the adjoining property line with Lakeview Village. And then some landscape planters along in the new parking area where employees will park. There are some existing trees that will remain in place, and then additional landscaping against the new garage. The road traveling from Werner Avenue to Lakeview Village, it's like a back entrance into the village, will remain. It is in existence now, and there will be no changes to that path of travel. And as I mentioned, also that wooden fence that has some growth along it, vegetation will remain in place, but they'll actually receive additional trees. The elevation of the buildings are your standard standing seam metal buildings, pitched roofs, gable ends. Each of the doors has an overhang to give it some articulation. The windows are nicely trimmed. The roll-up doors, as you can see, will face, not face the residences, they will face towards the east, north, and south as shown on that map. The buildings, the garage is 16-foot high, and then the maintenance building at its peak is 24. The setback, meeting the setback, and then also the height for that zone is 40 feet, so these are well under the allowed height. We did extensive public outreach on this project. We posted the site, as we do with all of our development projects, with a sign identifying that there's a proposal under review. We posted that sign back in May of 2021. We posted along the roadway, so anyone using that roadway to get into Lakeview Village could see that there was a project, and then it allowed them to stop and pick up a flyer from that signage in case they were interested in learning more. The cemetery also did its own outreach to the properties that are adjacent along that fence line to inform them of what has been happening or what they're proposing, and they received favorable comments from those residents. As required, we did post a notice in the Citrus Heights Messenger, published on July 30th. And also, as required, we mailed a notice to all the residents within 500 feet. We did receive some email communications from those notices. They were distributed to you by email today. I also put a copy at your desk. Since then, we have also received another email, I believe that was from Ford, speaking in favor. She was a past president of Lakeview Village, and she was speaking in favor of the project. The project did go through environmental review, which we call a CEQA, and it did qualify for an exemption based upon the items listed on the screen there, that it's an urban area, and it's an allowed use within the zone. Then the total square footage of the buildings is less than 10,000. And all those, excuse me, exemptions that qualify under that 15303 exemption. We are recommending approval of the project, which includes adoption of the resolution for that exemption of CEQA, and then approving the project, which is admitting that previously proved use permit and design review permit so that they can continue with the maintenance building relocating to the site. The applicant is here. Should you have any further questions? And happy to answer anything else that you have as well.
Wonderful. Thank you, Planner Bermudez. That was excellent presentation. And so I will open up for questions from any of the commissioners. Yes.
Yeah, I got a question. So a noise was a concern for the adjacent property owners. And you mentioned that the fire lane will not be used. So what will prevent the employees from actually driving on the fire lane? Will there be kind of markers or training?
It will be marked "fire lane" as required by the fire department. The employees are provided a parking lot as shown on the site plan there on the screen. So there will be no need for them to use that, but it will be marked "fire lane," so no cars can park or use it.
Thank you.
And one other on the noise, thank you for bringing that up. So during the construction of what's happening now with the new administration center, and then they did remove the existing maintenance facility, that they did need, still need a place to work. So they have had storage containers in this location since June of last year. And these storage containers have been serving as their temporary office and maintenance yard. So they have, the existing containers are about in this exact location. And this work that's there now in that area is the same, that will continue when the buildings are built. So if the residents have not experienced any issues from noise, this should not increase, as there will be no additional activities than what's there now. It actually probably will get better because there'll be buildings and not storage containers.
Commissioner Engel, did you have a question?
Yeah, that was really fast. So the highest, the building, the highest portion of either building is going to be 24 feet?
That's correct.
Correct.
That is the maintenance building itself, the large building. Let me show you this one here. So it would be the one on this building, the D.
With the frame?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And noise-wise, it seems like it may be noisier, just because these are obviously roll-up doors, right?
They are roll-up doors. The doors do not face the maintenance, I mean, the apartments, excuse me, the mobile homes. They are on either end or enters from the other side. So there will no be entrance, there will not be an entrance along that fire lane side, which is adjacent to the residences.
Another thing, in reading like your communication back and forth with the applicant, you'd indicated at some point, I think, that the code required a wall, but you were not going to require a wall.
That's correct. We could, the zoning code gives us the option to require the land use separation between the two. But with the condition of the existing fence and the existing vegetation, the wall, the fence that's there, we felt was sufficient. And then the screening with additional trees will provide additional screening as they grow.
So the screening is just going to be like, like something like Starbucks has on Sunrise, where they just put up?
I know. It'll be landscape, like trees that would grow up and provide screening and get.
Like against the building?
Oh, against the fence.
Against the fence, okay.
Yes, mm-hmm.
Okay. And then I did have one last question. It noted in here that the general hours are 7:00 to 3:30. Is it possible to put in a condition of approval that those are the only hours that maintenance can be? Or at least put a daytime hours?
Yeah, I'll let the applicant address that, because I'm not sure, like, if there is services, you know, what might need to be done, if there's a grave or a service going on, if they need to be there and use the buildings.
Yeah, I think some timeframe maybe ought to be in there, just because one of your letters stated a resident has been woken up, right? Early mornings with spraying or whatever. And then not related to the general maintenance, I don't think. But I'd be kind of, I'd want to look at the.
Sure. Well, when the applicant comes up, we'll have him.
I'll open the public hearing in just a moment. Commissioner Nishimura, you had a question?
Yeah, what's going to happen with the north end of the property where they originally had this planned for?
It will just remain open. Nothing, nothing will be built up there.
Any other questions, commissioners? Clarifying. Okay. All right, then I will open the public hearing, and I would assume the applicant is here. It looks like he's ready to address some of our questions, so come on up. State your name, please, for the record.
My name is Scott Miller. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Catholic Funeral and Cemetery Services with the Diocese of Sacramento. And the essential project manager for our current projects in this proposed project. There was a question of what is going to be done with that location to the north as part of the master plan. That will eventually become future grave space along the highway. There's no current plan to develop that in the near future, but that would be the future intent far down the road when we needed more space for future committals. There's also the question about the noise regarding the spraying and then hours of operation. The spraying occurs once a year, occasionally twice a year, depending on fungus that might be growing on the vineyards there. All the spraying needs to be done at night. And part of that is through Department of Agriculture and certain chemicals and volatilization and all things of that nature. We do know it is an issue. And we have spoken to one of the residents and offered to communicate with them in the future and offer them a hotel room the night of the spraying to not impact their sleep. But outside of that, that's really the only time of day that you can actually apply that chemical, usually in the springtime. I think it's an April, March timeframe for that. General hours of operation, we say, are Monday through Friday from approximately 7:00 to 3:30 PM for the maintenance staff. We say those are general operating hours, because that's generally speaking when the landscape work is being done and when we perform committals on a normal basis. We would ask that we continue the same hours that are in our use permit because we do have evening vigils that will be occurring in the chapel, evening activity there from a funeral perspective. We do occasionally make exceptions to our burial schedule to accommodate families, parishes, things of that nature, and can have, or currently have, occasionally a burial later that could go into the 4:30, 5 o'clock hour, which means the groundsman are going to be there at least until approximately 6:30 to properly close the grave, clean their equipment, put everything away for the day. And then we also occasionally do Saturday committals as well. So if we restrict it operating hours to strictly 7:00 to 3:30, I do believe that would have a negative impact on families who are looking for some flexibility in the burial of loved ones.
May I ask, it would seem likely that never after dark?
Oh, I think we could say never after dark, with the exception of the vineyard spraying, because those chemicals are kind of regulated by, I believe, this Department of Agriculture.
And likely never before 7:00 AM?
I can say likely never before 7:00 AM. As far as committals go, yes. Now, people showing up, getting hearse's out of the garage, preparing for morning funerals, that activity could occur from time to time, because we do have two parishes within the diocese where the priests prefer to have all of their funeral masses at 8:00 AM. So that does, we have services in those parishes. Our staff does have to start earlier to get everything prepared and to those facilities.
And can I ask, like, what is a range of a diocese? I don't know the terminology, but is there a range?
The Sacramento Diocese essentially, our service area within the diocese, the diocese is huge. But our service area is approximately Vallejo to Grass Valley and, say, Colusa to Rio Vista, if you were to kind of make a diamond out of that. The service area for Calvary Cemetery and the funeral center there is essentially what I'd call kind of the North Highlands, Citrus Heights, South Placer County area. But we also anticipate the Calvary Funeral Center being of service to Grass Valley, because we do have a parish and a cemetery in Grass Valley.
So theoretically, 6 o'clock to get to, make it to an 8?
Yes, yeah. We have never, in my time, no one has ever started before 6 o'clock.
Thank you.
Would you mind clarifying? So what I'm hearing is that the operation is not necessarily moving closer to this particular fence line. It sounds like the only thing that is changing is the actual building itself, which is the maintenance building. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So the funeral services, as they are now, would not be changing. You would not have burials or anything like that closer to this location as a result of changing the building. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Will that north area, part of the lot be landscaped until you use it for graves?
It is currently vineyard space and an access road to the back of the property. If we had constructed in that area, we would have had to remove a large portion of the vineyard to build that facility. So it will remain the same as vineyard space and just kind of an access fire break road along the fence line with Highway 80.
So was the catalyst just getting it closer to the admin center, once the admin center was approved?
The main catalyst was the cost to pull power from where it exists along the south end of the cemetery to the north end, and the cost of pulling the power across the cemetery. And the vineyards made that project unfeasible.
Yeah.
And so that's when we separated it from the original funeral center so that we could come to you and proceed with that project back in 2019, 2020, and remove the maintenance until we could figure out a better option.
Makes sense, okay.
I thought when we approved the original project, the vineyard, because the maintenance facility was going where the vineyard is, that you weren't going to maintain the vineyard. But so now you are going to maintain the vineyard until that area is needed for graves? Is that?
Yes, and there's nine acres of vineyards there that kind of spread north to south throughout there. It would be the vineyard on the north side of the property was the one that was going to have to be reduced in our original plan to put the maintenance facility there. But it is our definite commitment to maintain those vineyards until we need burial space, which should be far beyond my career.
Okay, any further questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate you coming. I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. And. Oh, I'll reopen the public hearing. Any further comments?
I have no comment cards.
Okay, that's what I thought. Close the public hearing? Okay. And Planner Bermudez, I believe you have a motion for us? Okay.
Cool. I move to adopt a resolution number 2107. Finding that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA in Guideline Section 15303, Clause 3C, exemption for the construction and location of limited numbers of new small facilities or structures.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded. And would you call roll, please?
You could just do a voice vote. Since we're all here present, you don't need to call it really.
Oh, fantastic. Okay, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? All right. Motion unanimously passed. Thank you. Do I need to read the appeal language?
There's one more motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's get that one done, and then I'll.
I will make a motion to approve the use permit modification and design review permit modification, PLN-2204 for Cavalry Cemetery located at 7101 Werner Avenue, subject to the findings contained in the staff report and the conditions of approval provided as exhibition A.
I second. Paul?
All right. You have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? All right. Motion unanimously passed. Thank you. All right. Now, do I need to read the appeal? Okay, very good. Any determination by the Planning Commission may be appealed to the City Council by filing a written notice of appeal and the appropriate filing fees with the city clerk, not later than 10 calendar days after the date on which the determination is made. All right. Congratulations. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
And next item, please.
Regular calendar, item 6A, Planning Commission Rules and Regulations Update. Project Planner Allison Bermudez.
Good evening. I mentioned at the last meeting that the City Council has changed their start time to their meetings to 6:00 PM. And just for consistency for the public, we want to move our Planning Commission meeting to the same time, starting at 6:00. We will do that starting in January. There'll be, could be new commissioners on board. There'll be some positions open. Hopefully, those are eligible to apply, will reapply. But the new commission coming on board in January will start with the 6:00 PM start time. So to make that happen and make sure that the announcement for commission applications gets published showing the right time, and want to go ahead and update the commissioner handbook. So I have presented to you the changes. That's the main change in there is the 6:00 PM start time. There was some other additional updates, just for clarity. We added some documents, like the Sunrise Tomorrow Plan is also listed in there now. So that will, does have to go to the City Council for review and final action, which will happen sometime between now and December. But I just wanted to share that with you, and if you have any additional changes or questions, I'm happy to answer. But the change, start time won't change till January, so just to let you know. And this doesn't require a motion, just jump up and down or nod your heads.
Great. Thank you. Next item, please.
That would be planning manager comments, and we have none.
Okay.
I did want to update you that we won't have a second meeting in August. We don't have any items. But September's looking pretty full, so either the first or second meeting in September. We'll try to put all the items on one meeting, but should be a good, a good full meeting.
Wonderful. Next item, please.
That's it, ma'am.
I think we're at the end.
We are.
Wonderful. Well, thank you all for coming tonight. It's been a pleasure, and I will officially close the meeting at 7:27. Thank you, Arlen, on Zoom.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Oh, you have it? Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah.
Turn it in at the reception?
Yeah. Anytime. She'll get it to us. Yeah, I'm with you. Yeah. So would you, you get the email, then? Do you just download it then from the email link that we send you? Yeah. And then do you print everything out?
Depends.
Okay.
Yeah. Like if I have time, otherwise I'll just, you know, when I have.
Yeah, like if I have time, otherwise I'll just, you know, when I have lots of time, then I'll just print out what matters to me.
Yeah, it'll say, because there's a lot of stuff on there, and you probably- It's kind of small. But yeah, all those big reports that sometimes-
This guy here tonight, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Finished my routine, right? Blah, blah. So he does that, and then get it here. I know he's just being funny, talking to friends.